Evening, it's now five thirty seven and I'm going to call the meeting to order and I'd like us all to please stand and Pam, how would you like to join us and lead the place? Thank you. Thank you, Pam. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Thank you to have a second. Barry seconds it. Call for the question, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. First approved. Barry, are you approving?
Andy, yes.
Man, Dr. Stern, thank you. Okay. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not.
Thank you. So it is now time for the study session and I'm going to turn the study session over to you, Dr. Braggie, who will lead this study session.
Okay, we'll actually go to right away, immediately turn this over to Don and Pam.
Don, will we find any of this as you're going through it in the book here? What can I turn to? It's easier for me to see it from here.
Yes.
We're not going to start right there.
Okay, well. I can stay with it as much as I can.
Or if you can just do the slideshow. First slide.
Slideshow is only on that.
Yeah, he's in this. Yeah, because I'm looking at it. Slide show is on the drop box.
It is? It is.
I have one second.
Had two wins. Have I got the second like?
Can you send it to me?
Here we go. I know.
Margie kept updating the link, so when she sent me to work, didn't have the slideshow.
Hang on one second.
Mrs. Marcus, it is in your book. At the beginning, when we get to it, it's in your book. The slideshow is in your book.
Okay, well, but tell me where it is when we get to it.
I will.
Thank you. Because then I'd be easy because I can see better.
So Pam will explain the book, kind of find your way, kind of what's in there. And then I'll just be doing just an executive summary, which is also in the manual.
But I can't get to is right up here because it's it's like it's let me do this.
Dr. Braggie, click enable editing. Oh, you got it.
Okay.
Sorry.
So thank you for long time coming on this. I know there's been requests and desires to present the status of where things are with the bond and where the building programs at. And as I've said many times, that the time for us to do it is when we are able to confirm enough pricing for both B three, B four, Elwood Dale projects that are under construction. Plus Building C, the site work and other other components of the plan. So we have budgets that haven't changed. That's eighteen. Pricing has changed and we have been estimating and pricing, which we'll talk about here today. So kind of where we are and why. This evening is extremely important meeting for us from a program side and project side. So first, I'd like to say, one, our idea of this meeting is not a formal reporting out, and we call it a study session. We really mean it to be an exchange, a dialogue, questions and answers, a lot of material, very important material. And so that's how we would like to engage this. We'll go through, we'll go through PowerPoint, about twenty-five slides. As we go through that, I'll stop, communicate, or ask questions, or amplify. That's how we would like to do it, because it's this whole program involves not just our operations and people, but the board. And that's the primary decision-making process. And so tonight is long time coming, so I'd like to start out with is walk you through a bit, what's this big monster? What's the roadmap for it?
Hey. So the genesis of this policy manual was the performance audit of the bond program in two thousand sixteen seventeen. TCDS came in to the district in July of two thousand seventeen and we were presented with this two thousand sixteen seventeen audit. And most of the observations in the audit were tied back that there wasn't a policy manual that was being followed. So for the next several months, we, along with district staff, put together the original policy manual that was adopted by the board on October ninth of two thousand eighteen. And one of the policies in the manual is it is to be reviewed periodically and updated no less often than every three years. So we're at three years. This is October, so this is the revised, reviewed and updated manual. You will see that we have given you the redline copy because it's already been adopted, we didn't want to spend a lot of time reading the whole thing. So we have just redlined the changes. The changes are, a lot of them are just formatting. Because as we came back and looked at the manual, we could see some places were capitalized and support and we tried to make that all consistent. So don't get too lost in all of the redlines, for instance, let's just take it one. If you open to the first page, it's actually the second page where you see the first redlines. We're just changing the logo because the branding of the district has changed. So if you look at the very first page, that's the way it will look after we accept all these redline changes. So that's an example. We have lived now with this manual for three years. So we were able to look at it with a different lens. We know what worked in it and what didn't and what needed to be fixed. So you'll see those kinds of changes. There will be, for instance, the facilities and construction committee asked us for a list of acronyms that they thought would be helpful as they do their work. So we thought, well, this would be a great place to house the acronym, so we've added an appendix that's appendix B. Now it's all the acronyms that we use. There have been some code changes that are reflected in here. We've added the whole prequalification packet that wasn't in there before. And one of the things also, as you go through, don't be concerned about the, find the small print. The reason it's looking so small is that it's redlined. And so it's just the formatting and the comments on the site. Once the redlines are accepted and they go away, it'll it'll be easier to read. Okay, so the section that we're going to focus on tonight is section three. And that is the update for the implementation of the district's master plan. This is the district's master plan. It was adopted by the Board of Education in two thousand twelve. And so there have been updates to it, obviously, since two thousand twelve. And you will find in section three, a very comprehensive update. We have taken in consideration all of the performance auditors' observations about the master plan. And we have included information so that those will all be satisfied. So it is on one hand, a celebration of all that's been accomplished in the last three years and you will see that there are many, many photos that we have put in there so that you can see the before and afters, a lot of things. But it's also confronting the challenges that are before the district as you continue to implement the plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Blake to still what you need to know as, as decision makers.
So the purpose of this executive presentation is to capture that book.
Let me tell Mrs. Marcus, it is right, it should be.
I have it right here. I got it.
So and there's a message that we need to bring before Dr. Braggie and the board regarding where we are currently. In the last six months, simply put, the market has completely exploded beyond our grasp of understanding. Nothing in my, in my history, my background. You'll see some graphs that are supplied for you by periodicals, engineering periodicals and backup data that is not estimating numbers, but actual project costs. From two thousand eighteen to October, till today, actually, that increase in terms of project documentation, including DSA engineering records and periodicals, is twenty-two percent escalation over and above the escalation that was projected in two thousand eighteen. That's factor one. And I'll get into, that's the real meat of the story tonight. And what we believe, because we've been pricing, the last six months, our efforts have been with the architects, with the engineers, and with Pro West and my staff, pretty much full-time. Pricing, sub pricing, getting, as we go through, we call pre-construction services. And in that process, we're actually putting pricing out to major subs who understand they won't be getting the project business, are giving pricing. So we believe our pricing that we're going to present to today is current and reliable. And what it's telling us is twenty-one percent to today. Escalation from two thousand eighteen. Today, forward for the next twenty-four months of bidding, if we're going to bid work in the next year or the next twenty-four months, there's another twenty percent on top of that. Example. Currently, everybody's familiar with plywood, right? Sheet of plywood. Right? Well, a sheet of plywood, eleven bucks is what we are expecting in the two thousand eighteen price structure. It is now close to a hundred dollars a sheet, if you can get. So steel, drywall, the commodities, the major commodities for many reasons are completely out of, out of anyone's expectation. So today is, well, what does that mean? So let me walk you through where, where we've been and where we are in a recommendation going forward. The district's strategic long, strategic and long-range facilities master plan was adopted by the board in two thousand twelve, that's our starting point. So we're clear. We haven't changed that strategic plan. Projects have moved, we've taken some on, took some off, but the actual plan has not changed. It's a matter of pricing and sequencing and prioritizing projects. The board's vision, then, as it is now, was to provide modernized facilities to support educational program. Clearly, in the presentation, the two thousand twelve strategic plan, that was the priority. Educational program. As it emerged into the design process, that began to develop. Those facilities became facilities that also required massive seismic retrofitting, discovery of decayed buildings that required hundreds of millions of dollars to seismicly retrofit. So started with educational program and that remains. Also maintaining historical character, the buildings, providing safety and security staff and students was embedded. Safety and security was embedded in the concept of two thousand twelve.
Don, the seismic retrofit was added on after two thousand twelve?
Yes. The seismic retrofit, which we'll go through a little more in this, great questions as we go through. It's important to understand how this developed to understand how we got here. The seismic retrofit in most applications, there's levels that you can do based on, on, on statute. For most of the properties here, we ended up with, not all of them, but we ended up with what's called a mandatory AB three hundred seismic retrofit. Now that component is stringent. It came into play after the, the Northridge earthquake. And then legislation came into play for hospitals as well as schools. That basically said, if you, DSA, if you have buildings that meet this criteria, either nineteen seventy-five and earlier or built certain styles and the way things are put together, a concrete tilt-up gym, for example, was considered not in compliance. So it started with basically DSA being charged with going through their archives of all of the schools built in the state of California and sorting through to see which buildings fit these basic categories. They didn't decide anything, just said, here are these buildings. And then the responsibility of each school district to provide engineering services to respond back to DSA, which basically fits this parameter. If the cost to seismically retrofit is fifty percent of the cost to build new, then you build new. And the difference in Beverly Hills is that Beverly Hills is not receiving, as it were, funding from OPSC, which is an agency that, that gives eligibility for construction purposes. So AB three hundred is in play for code requirements, stringent. There are only very few projects that ever were built according to AB three hundred because you end up costing more than fifty percent to build new. Here, we have utterly decayed buildings that the cost for the seismic retrofit is why we're at north of two thousand dollars a square foot. When normally we would expect four fifty, four seventy-five, those number, two thousand eighteen numbers. A project that would be complex, like a theater, we've built, we've built probably ten performing arts theaters in the last several years, that would be, say, eight hundred, nine hundred dollars a square foot generally to get a concept. For these buildings, B one, B two, B three, B four, and Elwood Dale are two thousand dollars a square foot. So that's the concept, is that kind of makes sense about how we, how we got here? Okay. Next, now, so this slide is important. In two thousand seventeen, five about five years after adoption of the master plan, and nine years after passage of Measure E, bond measure, seven hundred and fifty million dollars in projects have been designed and submitted to DSA for approval at a time when the district only had bonding authority for three hundred and forty-four million.
How did you get to the seven fifty in project? How would that number estimate?
Primarily when you submit to DSA, the buildings and the projects, you have an estimate, a basic estimate. And then fees are charged from DSA for those drawings. So it's basically a DSA, when we first got here, was DSA's view that there, there's about seven hundred and fifty million dollars worth of drawings, product at DSA. And there's three hundred and thirty-three million dollars in approved bonds. So this was something to address and to resolve day one. And so by July two thousand seventeen, a hundred and eighty-nine million had been spent of the three, the original three hundred and thirty-four million. One school building had been constructed, it wasn't quite completed at that time, was the Horace Mann, forty-eight million, existing building, the Horace Mann, and twenty-nine million for modernization. Essentially, what that means is it was seventy, seventy-one, seventy-seven million for Horace Mann and a hundred and twelve million for consulting fees, architectural fees, legal fees, which included the MTA, a lawsuit, about twenty million at that time had been registered by that time. So there were costs or expenditures that had taken place, not inherently assigned to a school project. It was one school project.
Was the twenty-nine million the bulk of something or was it scattered throughout?
Well, that Horace Mann.
No, it's that, there was forty-eight at Horace Mann and then
There were two buildings going on.
Yeah, two projects in Horace Mann, so you add the two together, that's the right, so there was one school site under construction in two thousand seventeen. So what did this really mean? Go to the next slide. Many other buildings in the district were boarded up with most of the students learning in portable classrooms. MTA was planning to extend the subway over the high school. The district was pursuing a lawsuit against MTA, challenging MTA's eminent domain process. nineteen active oil wells in the high school were now the district's responsibility as a result of Vennicoes bankruptcy. Seven legacy wells were not identified, but we knew were involved in the property, that needed to be located and abandoned to Cal Gym standards. I'll make a clarification, I think Noah's probably the closest to this operation for the last several years. There's a cost to, to mitigate an oil that's producing oil well. Though the average depth of those nineteen oil wells was eight thousand five hundred feet. So they'd go down about two thousand, twenty-five hundred feet, and then go in different directions, about five thousand feet underground. So the total of these wells were averaging about eight, eighty, eighty-two, eighty-five hundred feet down. The legacy oil wells, not so much. The legacy oil wells are between, some of them are two thousand feet, which would be the deepest, the two that MTA hit or in the thousand-foot range. The problem with those, because they were plugged, they were taken out of use in nineteen ten. Some of them, at that time, to plug them was a telephone pole that went down in the hole. So methane, gas and all kinds of
Oh, that's where that might went.
All kinds of problems. So the point is the cost for the nineteen wells was a different cost per well than the two that MTA, those are about ten million a well. Because that's an important number to understand. If we're going to, if on the site
Which is ten million a well?
Big part?
Which one?
One's it.
The legacy wells in MTA.
Those run about ten million.
And what is the other nineteen? Was it thirty-two million or?
I think all in was forty-two million.
Yeah.
So the impact here, as we'll, as you begin to see this develop here, what impact was the MTA lawsuit from a capital standpoint? And what was the impact and what was kind of known and not known regarding the actual final cost for the well mitigation? So several legacy wells needed to be located and abandoned. Mass shootings were haunting American schools. And we had a hundred and forty-five million dollars left in Measure E. So that means that was not enough resources to begin construction on it, B one, B two, B three, B four, or Elwood Dale. It was not enough money to complete any of those projects. So that was true in two thousand seventeen.
So were you aware of the seven legacy wells before?
Yes. The, so again, July, July two thousand seventeen, I was contracted to come and begin to unwind, use the word salvage, but unwind some things and move the, move the program forward. Two thousand eighteen, we were presented, presented an update to the district's master plan that contemplated, this is important, using the balance of Measure E funds, one hundred forty-five million plus state seismic mitigation, SSMP funding of six point six million. Developer fees of six point eight million. Projected SSMP of eighteen point eight million and securing future funding of three hundred and eighty-five million dollars. Those were the contemplations. So the total, for the total of five hundred and sixty-eight point nine million to fund the building program. February two thousand eighteen update also outlined the projects that will be completed by two thousand twenty-nine. Okay?
Did the SMMP funding, the six point six you already had at that point, you'd already received? And you were applying to get the other eighteen point eight million or hoping to?
Which you're currently, currently applying. So what was not contemplated in two thousand eighteen? With board priorities, for example, auto and auditory modernization on hold, MTA subway construction, which caused the redesign of Building C. MTA subway construction hit two oil wells, which had to be abandoned to current standards. District developed and implemented a full-spectrum security program. Swim Gym was renovated. DTSC requirements evolved as soil conditions were uncovered. What that actually means is, very important, is that we've been dealing with that agency for three years now. And that agency's conclusion is they're using either LA County thresholds for mitigation or LA City. We've been believing and we've been arguing for LA County for the last three years. We're currently with DTSC, they've made the decision and will finalize all this, will be LA City. The difference between LA City and LA, and LA County is between three and five feet of soil across the entire property that doesn't have a building on it, removed from the site. Because it is considered a hazardous site. Everything that's not on, that's not a building footprint, removed. Methane mitigation measures of various types installed and then import soil on top, extraordinary expense.
What was the, you're saying that's the difference between county and city?
Yeah, essentially the difference between which one are you going to use? Yeah, yeah, for the LA City is three to five feet. It's very, very stringent for methane mitigation measures. LA County, less stringent. So
What were their requirements?
For the most part, we would be, let's say you excavate an area or dig a trench, then we would test portions of it as we go, and if it tested
Then you minute you
Yeah, we wouldn't be taking up all the soil. It's more time, but considerably less money per yard. So DSA required upgrades from modernization to full seismic retrofit projects. So two thousand, as, as projects begin to go to DSA, two thousand fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, in those timeframes, they went in as modernization for the most part. Through the DSA process is when the drawings were sent back for review, we call them redlines, reviews. And they required a full seismic retrofit. As you recall, I think the only one was here at that time was Zuma. On B three, B four, we did a study session on how B three, B four's cost, not supposed to cost, but how that developed. Went from, was originally envisioned Went from, was originally envisioned, was um installing a sprinkler system and a paint. And it went from about forty million dollars to almost a hundred million dollars. By virtue of changing it from modernization to a full seismic correction. Full seismic retrofit means dirt down, new footings, new walls, new roof, new everything.
We have a great photo, um section three, page one oh three, the micro piles.
Yeah, how many micro piles?
Two hundred and eighty micro piles.
What are you talking about?
H one oh three, uh section three.
Section three, one oh three, I'm in section three now, I think, alright?
None of us have ever done that.
No, you're not there yet. You have the three. See the title for the, there's a three.
I hope it.
Pass this one, pass Jay.
Number three.
We have not contemplated the uh reorganization of K two A and the K two five model school model.
Before you go on, I wanted to say one thing, uh about the MTA. Uh construction that hit the two oil wells, because I think people get lost in the uh, the fatigue of the MTA fight.
Yeah.
And, and what was it all for and what happened? The whole purpose of that battle was to prevent the tunnels from going under the school, to prevent what happened from happening. Now, MTA got a pass because the world had a pandemic. And the school at the point, when they hit those wells, did not have students on the site. Um Don, if your recollection is correct, how many classrooms would we have had to evacuate when they hit the wells?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four classrooms.
What oil wells did they hit?
Hit Wolf Scale, I grew up on Wolf Scale, and Rodale one oh seven, which is.
They hit them both.
Yeah, yes.
Hit them both.
With, how much time in between did they hit them?
About twenty-four hours.
Really?
We were at a bench trial, Terry was actually in court, bench trial, standing in front of the judge. And about five o'clock in the afternoon, and I sent video to Terry saying. This is coming up to the surface, they just hit, hit two wells.
Yeah, and I, I remember the conversation was, how do we do this?
Years before we had started this, this um legal embroilment with, with Metro. Saying, please don't go under the campus, please don't do that, you don't know what's under there. Um and despite the pandemic, we were like. Um they got, they got a pass because there were no kids on campus to evacuate. But had there been, we would have relocated twenty-four classrooms of students, of which we had nowhere to put them.
Right.
This, this, we never had to go that far because we had the, the order and schools were closed. But to think about the fact that, how would we have run our school had that happened?
And, and we couldn't because it's, unlike elementary, it's not one class, it was the entire school, would have, we would have had to close the school.
Yes, it, it, it was, it would have been a mess beyond repair, so.
What did MTA take responsibility for in terms of hitting the two oil wells? Because I recall saying, you know, many times you see MTA's reimbursing for X, Y, and Z. And that's, that's regarded to repair the oil well.
Yes, the cost, we're, we're still arguing with some final invoices at the end, but. Virtually all of that cost is reimbursed by MTA. Hitting the wells, the cost of the wells, cost of mitigating, and some, some.
Illegal, illegal.
Legal and, and some.
Moving that one structure that was by B one or B two, I can't.
The building age, demolition building age, moving M and O from out of H over to Elrodale. So yes, they did, um I must say, if Terry, Mary Jane, and myself and, and Dr. Braggy. I think you came with us once too, uh to MTA's office, if we hadn't had made ourselves. Uh quite clear, uh MTA's position was they're not gonna pay for anything, and they're not gonna do anything about the wells. Um and our science that produces knows there's, when you hit the well. Um there's methane gas, here's all the reasons why you can't do that. Calgem finally came, came to the table and forced MTA to stop. They didn't wanna stop, they, they were gonna move the drilling equipment through, under the campus without stopping.
Mm-hmm.
So they were delayed about a year from their program. Uh over mitigation for these two wells, but we would not accept that risk uh on the campus.
Was that like around a year ago?
Yes.
Yeah, I seem to remember roughly around the time it was camping. Um did, so now we only have to have five of those, seven, or three of those.
Yes, there were two that we located that by.
Are outside of.
Yeah, off, off campus, and when I say located, we're looking at our types in nineteen hundred. Uh but there are three that we locate and we, we've excavated to the top of the well head. Which we'll get to here in a minute with the indications of that is. Um we've been working, well, let me go to the next slide.
I have one question on the slide first. Um is building C the new athletics building in the plan that'll be set in front of B one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Uh the following conditions were not contemplated in February two thousand eighteen. Unprecedented escalating market prices replaced most budget estimates. Um accelerated schedules uh with an earlier end date of two thousand twenty-five in lieu of two thousand twenty-nine. What that simply means is we accelerated all the project starts, early starts. And accelerated all of the design process. It took four years off the master plan schedule.
That was part of Elrodale, that was why we uh shuttered Elrodale.
Yes, all of these things were not contemplated, but we were able to accomplish. So some of the project scopes were expanded, some were downsized, and some were eliminated. Uh seven legacy wells had to be located and abandoned to Calgem standards. Worldwide pandemic disrupted the supply chain and caused labor shortages. A water leak flooded the former Venico site.
That's your latest.
You've missed it.
So, so Don, in my quest to trust but verify, I just brought up a site that talks about the change in, in commodity prices.
Yes.
May of twenty twenty and July of twenty twenty-one. This is chart. Um yeah. Copper is up a hundred percent since last May, just in that time span. Steel seventy-five percent, copper a hundred percent. That's just in the last year plus. The, and that doesn't include the last couple of months, and it doesn't take under the full supply chain disaster, which has gotten worse and worse. So the escalation that you're talking about in the marketplaces is, has gone astronomical. It's, it's, you know, I don't, I don't know how people can sustain this kind of influence.
Well, as we presented, we go through here, I think I need to report to, we can't.
Yeah.
So, and, and why and how much? Okay, next, we'll get, get to the meat of it quickly here. The changes impacted in the budgets, I'm gonna go through this, and if there's any question that Pam could probably answer. Because we use programmatically some terms and they're a little confusing. Uh we use committed and we use non-committed and we use budgets and. These different things that we do, they're accounting things. So what, the point of this particular slide is just to say, during the, during the course. Of the last three years, changes impacted the budget for projects. For measure E, the impact was added twenty-six million to the two thousand eighteen budgets, however. The measure BH two thousand eighteen budget was reduced by seventeen million. Okay, so we have, we, we do this, this happens, this is part of the process. Uh for consolidated budget increase of nine, nine million uh sixty-three. All the changes have been approved by the board, each of these stages kind of is a super high altitude. We have some ups, some down, and, and this is kind of where we are. The revenue projections, however, have also changed since two thousand eighteen. The, and reflect on consolidated revenue increases seventeen million. Yes.
Um roughly, what is the added amount to measure E? What was that? Is that from uh MTA or like, is there something that you can attribute the bulk of that increase to?
The detail of it is in, because um in this book, let me see if we can. Maybe two of it.
Oh, because at that time you didn't have MTA in there, right?
No.
Yeah, it's probably him.
So that, that's a piece of it. So this is again, this is an executive summary, but the detail of each of these components are, are in the manual. So um substantial progress has been made on the project since February two thousand eighteen. So if I can go through this, Dr. Braggy, fairly quickly, so I know it's getting late. These slides that you're going to look at is a simple showing you two thousand, in February, kind of where things were. And where things are now. Basically, Horseman, um things weren't either started or finished. And it's basically finished. So you can uh deep dive those if you'd like, but let's go to the next school. Beverly Vista. And again, this is all relating and tying back to the February two thousand eighteen plan. Okay, so at that time, uh it did drop off. Uh was it started, site improvements not started, two thousand twenty-one, all, they're all complete. Okay, so, next slide. Alton Elementary School, the auditorium in two thousand eighteen was put on hold, it's still on hold. A reconfiguration and related projects weren't started, but the reconfiguration, related products are complete at Alton Elementary School. Oops. So Elrodale, right, okay, Elrodale. Modernization of buildings A, B, C, D, and E at DSA for approval. And site approved improvements at DSA for approval. Where we are today is modernization of those buildings are under construction at forty percent complete. Uh site improvements also are forty percent.
So when you um went out for BH, or when you made the argument to uh close Elrodale and that that would accelerate by eighteen months or something to that. What was the, where did you project to be at this time?
Well, at that time.
I understand a lot of things have changed, but I'm curious.
Well, it would be, i- if, if I could go back in a time capsule.
Okay.
Uh I would like to have had the Elrodale drawings in front of me. If we had known what did, what came out of DSA from those drawings. There was a two-year, I wouldn't say delay, but slow roll, two years. The reason why, the drawings weren't complete. Um MEPs, for example, had to be drawn. What was at DSA, uh in the previous group of folks were probably looking for cost savings and value engineering. So the plan was to reuse all the mechanical systems, the ducts. Reuse all the electrical system and conduits. Doesn't really work when you're doing a seismic retrofit. So uh what came out of DSA. Uh took about, I'm not saying it took two years, I'm just saying, we, we were doing demolition. We were doing pre-construction services, pricing, um doing um investigation for about two years. Before we really got into where we have full production on that site. So if we had gone back in time, then. Uh what was at DSA, or what came out of DSA at the end was not what we were confronted with when we made that script. So Beverly Hills High School, I'll fly through this fairly quickly. B one, B two uh completed. Further, you'll see in your documents, B one, B two was delivered. Well, I think we would reach to nine million.
We have, the auditor has confirmed that it's nine million shared savings, so it would be four and a half million to the district.
That's a consequence of how we run this program.
It's just half a legacy well.
Half a legacy well. But I, and, and, and we're fortunate that those pri, the cost containment for B one, B two was contained and well-contained. For those, for that pricing timeframe. B three, B four modernization at DSA. B three, B four is currently forty percent complete, about the same as Elrodale. Um the building C Aquatic Center um designed in two thousand eighteen had three-story parking level. It currently was, has been redesigned and has one layer of parking and is at DSA.
Do you have any idea when they're getting that one done?
I'm pretty confident it'll be first quarter. But that's, uh basically, I think Dr. Bragg and I could go down and talk to Doug again. But the amount, well, volume of work that's at DSA, he's confided in both of us more than once. That the expectation of anything coming out of DSA in the normal times is double.
Is it also, do you anticipate that the eminent domain will hang that up?
Um that's a good point, I think um one of the, one of the um issues is. DSA will not uh issue us the drawings um complete. Until a document is supplied by MTA. That verifies that MTA's engineers, our engineers in DSA. Are agreeing that there's no weight load on the top of the tunnel. We've known it, we've proved it, but that letter won't be provided to us, we've asked many times and, and we're certain it's not the lawsuit. So uh south site improvements, retaining walls. Uh currently, the, the retaining walls are at DSA, so I'm saying with retaining walls is at DSA. Um the actual site plans for the south campus is in design and is not complete.
So, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Uh so in the manual presented tonight, page, or on page one thirty-four, there's a rendering of. That south uh site improvement with the retaining walls and the baseball and softball field.
Yes.
Um and this manual is also using the master plan from October sixteen, twenty eighteen.
Yes.
Okay, so if you go to the, that master plan on the district website. The renderings look slightly different in the sense that the, the scale of the two fields, it seems that they overlap in the one that's linked on the district website. Which of these two uh images is more accurate to how it would actually be?
I have no idea.
Is it, we're, that's what you're redesigning right now, correct?
So, yes, the problem, the challenge we have with the property, we call it a postage stamp. We have between, if you wanna move a, a regulation baseball field up closer to, to uh. Not Moreno, but Heat, or then you want the space between the ball fields and the bleachers and the football field. You go either north-south, maybe three feet, east-west, less than that. So we, as we move this, this changes, the issue is, the priority is that the pool needs to be a certain regulation size. The football field and the track, CIF regulation size, and the softball field. So we're tight. It may move, it may change, it may have a different look. In so far as, as you get to the softball field and you look up. It's how many bleachers will be incorporated in that concrete and retaining wall. That changes as we develop this, either for cost purposes or simple engineering uh functions. Uh so that will change. The drawings for the area of the retaining walls. Are at DSA, piece that is not, will be the retaining wall that goes along Olympic and the Venico site. Much more challenging now that we blew up the water. So uh that one is gonna be a little bit before we get that, that one into DSA. So parking lot project. This specifically, this parking lot project is not the project that was envisioned. In the two thousand eight, two thousand eighteen, that would have been under the football field. Okay, that, this parking that we're talking about here, that's, that parking is a board decision in the future. It's reserved for how the lawsuit turns out on the, in the domain case. Two things on parking. One is an option for the board, was made available. Uh depending on whether you were gonna be able to put anything, any parking uh on that eminent domain. On that eminent domain, in other words, if you're just going to build, you were not allowed, you wouldn't be able to put a subterranean parking at all. What is the board's options? Number one. Number two. If you do end up with one layer of parking as we have now. Then there's two layers of parking, it has to go somewhere. It doesn't go away, because we have to find another place in the postage stamp.
Do we need it?
I think for two reasons, the answer is yes. One is your E I R and your Sequoia documents. Have entered and entertain that and has been approved for additional parking onsite. That's number one. Number two is whenever it comes time to do. The modernization or new construction for building A, you'll need the parking to offset. Because that will take out all the parking. So the parking essentially under building C, the aquatic center. That's really kind of replacing the space that's in front of the swim gym now, kind of that number of parking. Essentially, a little more than that, because essentially, we're taking out the parking that otherwise would swim gym and putting it under building C. So we needed to at least do that. Number two, when, the, the, the second piece of this. Out of the eminent domain case, we've entered a price. That we are arguing with MTA regarding the cost of relocating that two-layer parking. So that's conceptual. We have a price we've entered court in court, we've taken court. It's on hold pending litigation. So we don't, what we're saying is that here. We're not entertaining the two-story parking structure. At this point in time until after litigation is resolved. If through litigation, we can pay for it, then that's how we'll do it.
Where would the two-story parking structure be?
We have looked at the only location we've seen for design would be where the village is now. Is intended to ultimately be a soccer field and some basketball courts and tennis courts. Expectation is to do it on grade, two, two layers of parking and the ball fields on top of the park. So, excuse me, the sports activities to be on, on the top of the parking structure. For one, number two, part of our negotiations with MTA is an easement off of the property going directly west. So that would be desirable for the district.
Is that that space adjacent?
No, kind of where the, where the big tower crane is now. Once they complete that area, it would be an access from our property going west to, was it?
Central Park East, oh, all the way to Central Park Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, the next block. So that would be able to provide ingress and egress off of the site without coming down. We want to try to avoid as much as possible using the Olympic entrance and exit for traffic. That would be a fire lane as it is now. So those are designs or a concept. On hold until we get through the trial. Okay. Oh God, it's time, guys. Okay. So as of August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Measure E had an uncommitted balance. Oops, did I miss one?
Missed the other projects, I think.
Oh, the other, okay, sorry. Okay, this one is a decommission. We had a decommission of nineteen oil wells, they're decommissioned. Abandoned two MTA oil wells, they're completed. Project not started is M and O, we entertain something, we picked something for M and O to have a facility and some real estate.
That's not confirmative though, is it, right now?
Now, what we currently have in mind is we're moving them up into what the village area, we're removing on the portables. And they'll be up in that location. That's still a temporary solution.
Yeah.
But for now, that's the only real estate we have for M and O.
So we moved them from here to Elrodale and that?
Yes, no, MTA is paying for that, that process.
Oh, to go there.
They don't know it yet, though.
No, they've been.
They do, okay, all right.
Okay, thank you.
So the rest of this is, is interim housing and. Full-scale security programs in design and development stage in two thousand eighteen. We say seventy percent complete, what's left is the implementation phase, which is we're in the middle of now.
Can I just plug the menu just a second? Starting on page eighty-five of section three, that's where all the photos are, that show the before and afters of all the.
I didn't include them in this. Okay, August twenty-seventh, measure E had an uncommitted balance of eight million. I guess next slide. So measure B H had an uncommitted balance of a hundred and fifty. With the projected additional revenue of twenty million, twenty point five. Basically, what that leaves is a hundred and seventy-eight million. The point of this paragraph is when we had a hundred and forty-five million dollars in our wallet. It's, this is the hundred and seventy-eight million in our wallet, which is what this is. Okay, the budget for the remaining projects adjusted to estimated updated market prices. At the time, they will be bid projecting, when these guys are going to be bid, at least twenty-four to thirty-six ones out. Is three, three oh seven. Okay, next slide. In your, in your manual, you have the detail, and we can provide much more deep dive of what these estimates are. We have rings of estimates and subcontractor pricing. The ability of the Board of Education to continue to fulfill its commitment to the voters hinges on a couple of, several variables. One, what will we find when we dig footings for building C? Okay. Building C is going to be from, if you can imagine, there's a retaining wall, this twenty-eight feet. Okay, so imagine the top of the walls at twenty-eight feet. Let's just, for getting our mind around this. That retaining wall is going to be about twenty-eight feet and then a foot. The building C is going to go down further with the one-story parking. So the bottom of that footing is about fifty-four feet from top of the grade. Okay, so the retaining wall, someone's saying, well, why do we do this? Well, the retaining wall is what we cut back on the toe of the slope. To create the real estate to have a footprint for the building. The building is quite large. It's about fifty thousand square feet. Okay, which is quite large in footprint. And one-story apartment. That means that whole operation for digging and excavation, there's a couple of things we don't know. We know pretty much what soil conditions are because we bore and we test and we do that. We don't know, is what DTSC tells us we don't know. Which is the methane mitigation, you dig down and you pull it apart. And that's when we'll discover what the effects of that mitigation is. How much reengineering will be required for the retaining walls to comply with DSA, DTSC? This is an ongoing battle with the two agencies that were involved with structural engineers and soil engineers. So much fun. The problem is this. A decision was made in the early nineteen hundreds to build the school on an oil field. And the oil field was not mitigated or cleaned up, they didn't do that back. So it's still here. So that, that's essentially what we're dealing with resolving. Going anything below, for example, at the tennis courts. You know, the sidewalk to the north of the tennis courts where that ramp goes up. If you dig down about ten inches on the outside of that sidewalk, it's crude oil. So that's what we're dealing with, is building, building to rack improved oil and contaminated source.
Do you have any sort of a hint from MTA doing their tunnel?
You mean the current, the site condition? No.
No.
They're down seventy-five feet from grade. So what will happen with market conditions? Will twenty-two percent be the number going forward or could it be more? We are, we are projecting that in the next twenty-four months, it'll be an additional, it's compounding, and the twenty-two percent gets us to the day. Then another twenty to get to the next twenty-four months when the next bid cycles, these projects start.
And is that where your three hundred and seventy million?
Yes. Along with supply chain disruption or labor shortages. We've had these kinds of things in the past in our careers, this is unprecedented. So next slide. No, next slide. The question is, how far do we go in sequencing the following? High school south side improvements. Go quickly. These are just bullet points. Just go back and read them, but I wanted you to have, kind of see through our eyes what we're dealing with. Obtaining DTSC clearance. Obtaining cowgen clearance by abandoning the three legacy wells. We've reported to you, Tara and I, that we feel that we. Were able to get cowgen to relieve us of having to mitigate those three wells. However, an earthquake occurred. And there's a deluge at the Venico site, and we're required to go back and test those wells. Means dig it up and get down to the wellhead. One of them is bubbling, so we have good evidence to believe that will be mitigated.
That's one of the nineteen, right, you're talking about?
One of the three.
Oh, the three are bubbling, oh, okay.
And they're all together. If you do one, you do all three.
No, no, I understand that.
It's the ten million per well.
Ten million per well, well, that's what would cost us for the others, approximately.
So, starting construction on building C and dealing with soil conditions as they come. How much contingency do we put into a G max? Once building C can be occupied, moving programs and demolishing the conheim while keeping the swim gym operation. What that means is this. Currently have approved thirteen point five million for utility modernization, that's for storm. Water and for electrical across the campus. Reason why that's important to do, because when you take the conheim off, conheim systems is connected here. The swim gym. So mechanical, electrical, and all the infrastructure is in the conheim building. For the swim gym. So that's an interesting chore, to shut down and re-energize. So we planned this ahead by doing the infrastructure underground first. We designed that scope of work so that it doesn't interrupt. It's going a little longer, it's my, it's routing. Will not interrupt any program, meaning we're going around the tennis courts. We're going to go down to the bottom of tennis courts and come up in the parking lot for the swim gym. So this massive utility infrastructure for the entire property. That we believe we can do without tearing up athletic program. Okay, so building out the athletic fields. Realizing that once construction starts on retaining walls, the high school site will be significantly more disrupted.
When you say retaining walls, is that the building C?
Yes, in other words, it's a Rubik's Cube.
And the site, it's the whole.
Yeah, the site. If we, if we do retaining walls and say we stop. That will, that will have torn up the tennis courts. The softball fields, the ball fields, and give you basically just the football field. And that would be your only program. Because if there's a gap in construction, we always plan, we do, we do the retaining walls first and then building C. But we can accept that because there's no gap in construction, it's a contiguous, production contiguous plan.
But Tom, we're not using the other fields right now anyway. So, you know, the only thing that we lose, not a good thing, are the tennis.
That's right. So, and the tennis seems to give a successful program.
Yes, it is.
So, so not all of these components can be completed with current funding. So there's the last sentence, and that's one. So we go to the next one.
We got a minute to recover from painting?
Sorry.
We got a minute to recover from painting from that last statement, you're just moving on like it didn't happen?
There's more, more.
Okay, possible, this is variables. So that's full disclosure, this is kind of what we all, in our, in our little bubble up on the, up in the parking lot. We negotiated, Dr. Brady's done a great job of presenting our case to Doug Humphrey, who's the director at DSA. And Doug has suggested to us that we should go after SSMP and Elrodale. We thought that that would be a no. Because it's a voluntary seismic. The only one we got the drawings on the DSA was on the title sheet, they changed the word mandatory to voluntary. The drawings are still the same. So that's how we got them out of the S A. So there's a possibility of introducing Elrodale or SSMP, that's about twenty-one.
What does this mean? Seismic.
State seismic.
Mitigation.
Mitigation program. So it's a reimbursement.
And let me, may I just say, this is why you now.
No, I know, I was, I know that it was there.
And so all of those are in here, because it happens all the time.
So the possibility of some additional revenue is, is that Elrodale, we feel pretty confident we should go after.
How long will it take to get?
Six months to get fast-tracked, to get in front of OPSC. If it's all agreed to, and correct if I'm wrong, it'll be a year from today. To get in front of OPSC, get a decision, get a check.
Our check would be six months after the year.
Right.
Eighteen months before we can have the money.
Does it hold up in any way progress that I would get?
No. No, that.
Is there a cost to getting it?
Yes, there's a certain amount of cost for the architects to do some. Not redraw, but go through the drawings in bubble, say, well, this is seismic, this is seismic. Okay, same thing we did on, on B one, B two, and B three, B four. But it's, it's, we're talking maybe five thousand dollars in design costs. And the third, the second one you see coming down the list, the eminent domain legal fee reimbursement. Where we have, I believe, the number seventy-five billion on the table in the eminent domain case. MTA is three hundred and ninety or seven hundred, moved from three hundred ninety, three hundred sixty thousand dollars. I think it's seven hundred thousand currently, something like that, and we're at seventy-five million. So that's the spread between the values. So don't know how that's going to turn out, but we think there's a good possibility of some money back to the district. Okay, on the other side, additional costs. Construction of building C has to do with the dirt. We can add money, right, we can put a contingency clause in there. But that's what we're able to do with the program, with the G max, we're able to. Retaining wall sequencing, demolition, and conheim, construction while keeping the swim gym operable. That's going to be the chore. And our plan is to do this infrastructure utility mitigation now and be ready to pull that switch. When it's time to demo conheim, otherwise, there's a gap, a huge gap in the schedule of the program. If we wait to do that when it's time to take down conheim, does that make sense? Okay, soil conditions, reengineering, this is requiring more robust structures. DS, DTSC. Venico cleanup from the water spill. We're still, I think Tara and I will be bringing to next week updates on where we are with the claim. Market conditions, supply chain, label shortage, twenty-two percent cost increase and an additional twenty percent the next twenty-four months. These are the variables. Okay, next one. So. So.
In terms of insurance for the claim, does it look like we're going to get coverage for that?
We're going to go exercise all, all effort and due diligence.
Venico non-existent.
Our insurance.
Oh, okay, yeah.
And that will bring it closed, we'll reserve that in close. So financial recap. Big picture, when we say uncommitted funds, everybody understands this means we, there's not contracts or committed things. This means that B three, B four is covered, Elrodale's covered, the utility modernization is covered. Okay, and with these cost estimates for the remaining projects, three hundred. So the delta is hundred, a hundred and twenty nine million.
That's an estimate.
But you may make it up in MTA.
Correct. We're presenting to you as a board, this is the information that we have at this point in time. But the mechanism and how you choose to address that will come from the CBO and come from others. We just need to give you the, the hard realities here, okay, next slide.
Does the utilities work with the exterior retaining wall?
No, when we get to the bottom here, I'll show you, I, I'm, it's, it's my recommendation that you not do the retaining walls, you not do building C, and you not do the site work, construction. You should continue to do the, which we have funds for, continue to do the engineering and the design and complete the drawings. So I'll jump to the end, there's a lot of numbers here, but I'll jump to the end if you'd like. I know we talked about this earlier. If we continue and complete what we just talked about, let's, let's go, Dr. Brady, to. The last slide pretty much says, here's, here's where we are. So in this particular slide, let's go to the next one. Here. And Pam, if you want to take this one, I think it's helpful. At the end of the day, what we see is that if you finish B one, B two, we do not have the final price on B three, B four. We do have a price that's coming to you next Tuesday for Elrodale, the final price, all in. We had budgeted thirteen million, it's at six.
When you say the final price for B three, B four, that's just, you have most of the price, you just are the last, the last one, so.
We're, we're negotiating. So, but if you do all that, as I described, you still have a hundred million, approximately a hundred million of, of funds. So we'll, we'll just take you so you can see how we got there. So we'll take this one.
So what we're showing you here is just what Don said, that the PJP for Elrodale comes to you on Tuesday night, and then that's locks in that price, so we don't have to worry about any market conditions on Elrodale. B three, B four, hopefully in the next weeks, we'll have that also wrapped up, and then market conditions will no longer affect that. What we've done of the rest of the projects that were in the February twenty eighteen update are listed here. So you can see the ones we've been talking about, building C and Athletic Center, what it was in twenty eighteen, what it is in twenty twenty one, twenty two percent escalation, just all the way down. But then if you turn to the next slide, please. Now we're continuing with escalation, so we have some current prices for the projects listed on the left. The first one that we talked about is the thirteen and a half million dollars for the utilities. You've already approved that, we have an agreement for it. The south side design and engineering, I have not approved, this is an estimate, this is what we think would take to continue doing the design and engineering. The Venico restoration, this is still an estimate, I think it'll be about seven million. And then the legacy wells, we've been talking about ten million dollars a well, which would be thirty million, but it is, that was the price of a year ago, so we have put some escalation on that to get to the thirty two million. And if you keep going farther out to twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four, it just, the prices just keep getting higher and higher. So the, what we're saying is if you do what is under contract and that, well, what we have these current prices for, then that's fifty nine million dollars. The thirteen and a half million is already in the committed, so this figure really becomes forty five million. And that's how you get, that's how you wind up finishing Elrodale, B three, B four, the design and engineering for the retaining walls, keep that going, and doing the finishing utilities, restoring the Venico site, and abandoning the legacy wells. And you still, you have about a hundred million dollars left.
Where does the technology and security program come into play, or is it embedded in these numbers? The soft costs for, because these are your buyouts, right, for Elrodale, so you still have other soft costs or consulting fees that can come into play. So where are those numbers?
The Elrodale and B three, B four soft costs are in the budget that are under committed costs. The thirteen point six million dollars for technology, even though you haven't signed contracts for all of that, I put it in committed, so it's, it's, it's in the committed column. What was the second one?
Security.
The security is in committed funds. And those funds will be spent this year.
When you say the security is in committed funds, that, is that just for the building program and implementing the program, but aggressive, the security part of the program? For example, Elrodale doors and locks, things of that nature, is that?
Security, building hard costs, the way we describe it is, if you pick the building up and shake it, and nothing falls out, then it's hard. The people's heart would be general bond.
So when you, for example, building A, when we want to ideally change the locking system in building A, where is that in this budget?
Is Mr. Roach still on this call?
I am here.
Is that, so is that a bond budget, or is that in our technology budget?
No, we would have to, we'd have to look at that, that cost and that need and do a deeper dive. As we look at building A and we look at building B three and B four coming online, you need to remember that you have twelve hundred students on that campus. There may be an opportunity to actually close off part of building A and not utilize all those classrooms, so it's a deeper dive that the board and staff are going to have to do on expending money on building A.
So we don't have it essentially, or that's predetermined in the future?
Yes, we've been looking at budgets with the intent of having the entire district on the Sulto lock system. And we've looked at different funding mechanisms, and I think that we'll be completing that with Mr. Roach and with Dave Demaco and with the security team, so. I, I, I'm confident that they'll come up with a solution to make that happen, because that's the whole district, that's the, that's the vision, is to be able to control ingress and egress from the command controls.
So I just want to work backwards for a second, so assuming we, I'm trying to match the numbers of the page, I'm sorry. If we do B three, B four, the utility trench, the south side design, Venico restoration, and the legacy wells. That leaves us then at a hundred million for the project for the site and building C. It's really, that, though, that's the remaining part of the project.
And you, you still have a placeholder at Hawthorne for the auditorium part, that including, is that in the hundred million? That would be in the hundred million.
I, I would say the, the message is that it's a hundred million approximately. That's not enough, I can recommend to initiate the retaining walls and building C and the site work.
Sorry, I forgot, I was assuming retaining walls was part of the site work. So looking at the numbers, I'm trying to see. The project center, we have a hundred and ten million, the remaining south side improvement, sixty eight million.
Yes.
So that's, you know, a hundred and eighty million? We have a hundred. We're really talking about more short of eighty million, eighty to a hundred. So Wade, I'm not going to talk to vendors of this.
Wade, I'm here.
Hi, so what are options do we have outside of a really good austerity campaign to get eighty million dollars?
There's various financing sources that the district can look into, whether they be certificates of participation, whether they be some type of modified bond anticipation note. The district does have real property, you could look at income streams from real property to pay for certificates of participation. You can revisit the possible sale of real property. So there's various options that we can look into, you can look into partnerships, joint ventures. So there's, there's a myriad of things that we need to look into for the board.
I have a thought. What if we, I mean, I'm just coming in as a new person. I know this has been the master plan, and this is the plan you have been working off of, but given the conditions of where you're at today, have you given any thought to what would be the best way to proceed, given like where our enrollment is, if we were to, how do we best use the funds we have to make the greatest amount of impact? Instead of planning, we have to have building C, or we have to have these plans that we have, is there a thought of looking at what we have, looking at what you're completing, and then saying, with what we have left, how do we best use the resources we have to make the best goal we can without kind of getting half pregnant and being scuffed?
I would say the worst thing we could do is initiate these particular phases at the high school and have a gap in time. So I would say, Noah, that while you're thinking eighty million, it's really more than that. If we're, because of the escalation when they would be bid. So that number, I would, I would suggest, I wouldn't want to be unclear that if we're looking for how much do we need, how we want to get it, with eighty million, well.
No, I, I see, there's, you know, there's a twenty percent and an additional ten percent, so I understand that it would push that out, but let's, let's visit Mary's question for a second and say, okay, whereas in order to give, knowing that B three, B four will be completed, right?
Yes.
And at that point, if you decided that was the end of construction at the high school, it's not the worst thing, you don't have an upgraded athletic building, but you do have an athletic building that is in need of being upgraded or replaced as, as the plan is called for. So then what would, from a construction standpoint, what would be the right book to ask?
Right, like say, say that we didn't do Conheim right now, we lost it, and you already freshened up building A, so to speak. What, what, how do we make this goal look the best we can with the dollars we have? But also, we're investing in that because that's where we are today, but also prepares you, gives you the ability to upgrade down the road, where you're not sinking a bunch of money into it. So like, for me, what I'm hearing you say is like, doing the utilities and having that prepared is a smart thing to do for future, but not doing C now. So maybe we put more of that into site work in terms of making the areas we do have improved in terms of what the feeling is on the campus and how that experience is for the student, so. Like, what, what do we do to make those areas improved and then look at the other areas that we may need to improve on as well? Just because I don't know that from a long term, having the school be a really viable option for the community to have it be under this level of construction for so far down the road, maybe a little break might be a good thing to capitalize on our assets and redirect where some of those resources are going to build to the future.
So a couple of things we're going to respond to, one, it was my intention to move the construction and, and it's, it's, it's on track, the issue is available funds, is to move the high school site from a two thousand twenty nine finish to two thousand twenty five finish. I'll show you the schedules on the last slide. So one is to reduce that as much as possible, that pain. Secondly, I, on the Conheim building, there are some things that can be done to quote, freshen up, but I would advise not to, not to be very careful and not modernize it, that would require DSA approval and that would require full site.
Right, no, I wouldn't.
So it can be some, kind of like building A, some of that can be done. And I think some of the site work can, can be done, the ball fields could be brought back. Venico area is going to have to be completed and soil, we plan to put the soil in the Venico hole from grading. If we're not going to grade, then we'll import that soil, but one way or the other, we need to cover about eight feet of soil and bring that up to, to mitigate the DTSC program for both CalGen and DTSC for the Venico restoration site. So that we would do, I would, I would consider recommending, but I think it's going to sound also odd for someone, my position, but I think money not spent is, is not a bad thing. I think that's not a bad thing. I think I would look at what, what is left and maximize that within reason, but I would suggest not spending. It's kind of a catch twenty two, how much do you spend and what does it get you? It's right at that edge. I think, I'm suggesting the board's decision, but my answer to your question would be to minimize the amount of funds that you have left and obviously maximize some degree, but not much.
I would, I would also caution us to set ourselves up before we make any permanent decisions, wait to see the results of our case in February in the SSMP, because if many, many millions more come in, then it changes the scope of our problem.
That's right.
In a positive way, and I'm not, I'm not saying it will, I'm just saying I would hate to kill the program early, you know, pull it off life support, if the case may be, and then we get this windfall of money and we're not geared up to do anything. And then if we would spend more money gearing back up to do it, we need to find, and I don't think it's something we can do here today either, we need to find what, what decision we can make that may be able to bridge either, you know, what Mary's talking about, or We need to find what, what decision we can make that may be able to bridge either, you know, what Mary's talking about or continuing the program. The best way to do that, you know, most physically possible way to do that. It's, it's, we want to be able to, the chances there, deliver a completed high school.
I think what we're talking about is moving the window, let's say bidding, right? Because we're recommending get the drawings out of DSA, complete that step. But then moving that window. A period of time, so I would, I would recommend two things. One, how much time can we? Let me say risk tolerance, because it's going to be more money and we don't know the market. So a certain amount of tolerance in time, there's a certain amount of good prudence to decide. How, how do we spend the least amount of money to get the biggest bang for the buck and preserve that capital? So if that future revenue does come in, I would recommend we hold on to as much capital as possible.
Eli, do you have any, are you all finished, Noah?
Yes.
One more. Oh, last slide, I'm sorry. This is scheduled, presuming everything goes forward, this is like, kind of like the real schedule.
Is that in here?
Yes, that's the last page. No, no, you missed it.
If you look at, there's the big one. That's the little one.
I'll look at the big one. Oh, yeah, so, but so much better.
So that's a current estimated schedule, that's the, that's the highest level altitude to. Understand what the components are. So. In, in closing, I would say thank you very much for. Heading through some, some, some difficult news, but. I might think it's a great opportunity to take that part. And to be prudent, frankly, not spend money and preserve that. So when these other revenue sources or other funding sources come into play, you, you, you're holding on to it.
What is the need if we do that, what, what do you need to be issued? I think in June, you needed funds, bonds.
Good one.
In June, you need bond funds issued, right? You need bonds issued for funding.
Yeah, I can, so we still need to issue. I would say at least a hundred and twenty five million dollars to have a tiny bit of cushion. And that's without going into building C and the, in the Southfield. So we're going to have to issue some bonds anyway, maybe not the entire amount. But we need to look at that option because interest rates are really low. And we do have a five year spend down, so if we plan to spend these monies within five years, it may be prudent to go ahead and issue the entire two hundred and twenty five million dollars.
So we have, just a question Wade, we have twenty, two hundred and twenty five million dollars that have not been drawn yet, right?
Yes, President Marcus.
Okay, you're suggesting that we use a hundred and twenty five of that?
Um, I, I need to work with the facilities group to see if that would be enough. But we also need to think about the markets right now and maybe it's more prudent. Because of the market rates right now to go ahead and issue the two hundred and twenty five million, if we don't have a penalty possibility, if we can spend that two hundred and twenty five million within five years.
I am curious. Given that scenario and not knowing that, that and then we're like. Which is how we think about it, to also think about this district office and Hawthorne and. And kind of look at it again, that big picture, I'm not talking about spending money, I'm just saying to consider. You know, where are we in five years and 10 years, where are we with district office, where are we with Hawthorne? What do we want that to look like, what do we, what can we do, what's the best way we can use funds to do so? And I'm not sure what that is, but I think it has to be a, you know, stop and look at where are we today and look at our figure to go to the future, what, what do we want this to look like?
It's our recommendation that the facilities. Construction advisory committee, that, that would be perfect. For them. Yeah, to move forward because. This bowling range, what we're suggesting is you need to do one of these. Which is not an amendment to like we've been doing, you know, it's sort of a button, not an amendment, but just an execution plan. This would be a plan that would do demographics, that would do analysis on, on. On needs assessment, the full blown. We would recommend, and I think that would be the perfect venue for that group. To be part of that initiation. But I think you're right, I think you're going to need a long term. This strategic and long term facilities master plan. Has a close date, so to speak. And after that, there's still considerations that you mentioned, Hawthorne building A, parking structure, the D.
Right, and what do we want, what do you want, Michael, and with the vision, like are we thinking we're having, you know. A preschool or, and you know, what's the extension of pre K, what's the funding look like for that? I think it's an overall, it's a bigger analysis to your point. Do you have development, development dollars that you can use to increase enrollment? What, what does that look like for you? What are the sources of income? I mean, I think the seven eleven committee had suggested like a, a land lease for this. Area, I don't, when, when I think longer term, when you're talking about parking, this could be parking if you need a parking. I just don't know that you need parking really down the road, but that's just, I can't foresee into the future what those parking needs are.
So some of the instructional needs will, after the first of the year, we're, we'll start doing some, some presentations on. You know, increasing with the TK program and then also preschool as well, just early childhood, there's a big focus that we'll be doing. And we'll share that with the board.
I mean, I, I don't know, I think that having, I love the idea of having Hawthorne as an early childhood center and that's increasing enrollment. And I don't know how you fund that, but it's not going to be these dollars, obviously, but perhaps there's other ways to get dollars for that, so that Hawthorne isn't. Left in the dirt, so to speak.
It will require a full hazmat. Project wide, and aside the question, unless the decision to revisit Hawthorne overall design and we recommend demoing it in building. Less than one.
Right, I think so too, I, I wonder, I don't know the structure of that building, but you know, the tower is what's really the. And I think perusing that facade right there and demoing the rest of the building.
So I think there's, there's a lot of decisions to be made, we need to be informed about the timing of certain decisions, I guess, as case may be, so the board has time to still agree. We don't, I don't want to, I want to, my colleagues, I don't want to be forced one day, one meeting, oh, this is what we have inside this box, so.
We're, we're not in that position, okay.
Eli, did you have any comments you wanted to make?
Nothing else that I'm thinking of or now, but thank you.
Is there a way that, that the timing or, or settlement or eminent domain would be sooner than the February date? That's just like your end. I mean, it was June.
No, COVID is driving that at the core.
Really, but they can't, you can't come, I guess this is a closed session question about settling, coming to an agreement on this. I mean, it sounded to me, it's hung.
I mean, I think the takeaway for me is we can finish B three, B four, we can finish on there. There will be nothing. There will be nothing unusable. You know, for the students, that's, I think the most important. The students will have two new K fives in the district, remodeled middle school and half, half plus remodel high school. And I think that's, that's a good, that's a good takeaway, that's very, I'm proud of that, you know, nobody expected a pandemic. Nobody expected the escalation of costs to be this bad. Nobody expected us to have nineteen laws to remediate, when all this started, we did not have those issues. As you said, back then, and these unforeseen conditions are, it's basically, you know, you want the bad news, you want the bad news. And I, and I think credit to you, Don, your team, and you, Michael, on your team. For trying to navigate through all of this, because it's, you know, in the end, we're just trying to educate kids.
That's it.
You know, that's the goal here, and we don't want to make this a center of attention, we just want to get it done and have it off a plate. I, I look forward to seeing what, what options and roads we can take and showing the stuff that the board can put together to make it more successful for students.
I would say that just not knowing enough of the detail of where you can start or stop in the high school area. That, given where you're at, that finishing those pieces, finishing B three, B four, finishing Elrodeo. And really making the site work that without redoing all of the site work, so finishing what you need to do on the oil wells, but really just. Making the rest of the school look fantastic, because we have been living now with dead grass and, you know, fencing. And I think that once that can be. We can put the dollars there and make that look great, make Elrodeo look great, and then it's a question of where do we go? In the next phase, so to speak.
The amount of money that we have.
I would use the amount of that money to make those look really great, I would. I mean, from an aesthetic standpoint, so that it's a really pleasing campus with areas that have been redone, the amount that you need to do a building A. Treatment to Conheim so that this looks good and feels good. There's such a significant part of the school that you will have redone, that will be really the feature of the high school. B one and B two and B three and B four again, have a significant impact. So I think, you know, really just spending the dollars to make the rest of that look good. Like what happened at the swim gym or to that extent, and then seeing, okay, now where do we go from here? What happens at this building, what happens at Hawthorne? And making certain that the other sites that we have are the best they could be with the dollars we have now. I think to me that there may be some hard decisions in there to do that, but I think that that's going to provide everybody a sense of progress and satisfaction. That they're really seeing and feeling a difference, I think. Celebrating B one and B two and B three and having the site work look fantastic and having like an opening at the high school. Where it has that feeling of being completed, maybe not what was the original projects, but certainly there's going to be a feeling of fresh and new. And that's going to be inspiring for everybody. And Elrodeo will be fantastic, I'm sure, so I think all those things will feel. Like the school, the district has been modernized in many ways and that it will feel really successful.
And, and in a couple of years, it tackled. Venico restoration, the oil wells, the utility trench. We get those done within the timeframe when B three, B four open, I think that was the plan. So it would be three, before open, the fences go away, the equipment goes away, the lawn comes back and you, and you say, we're just going to walk away from all this for now. And we'll revisit it another time, that might be a way to go, I don't know yet, but you know, sometimes these poor kids, they've lived in construction so long. You know, some, some, some people will come into the district and, and depending on what school they were at, will never not know construction. So it's, it's, it's another way to look at it.
I, can I just wanted to chime in here, I've been pretty quick. One of the things the community has been very, you know, been longing for and longing for is to see this, something that they can now be proud of. And I think when we finish B three and B four, and we can do something with that front lawn to, maybe, I don't know what it will entail. But to give them some kind of pride in, in coming to the school, unfortunately, so many kids have gone through the school and never had that feeling because they've been in this, this situation. So I'm, I'm thinking in terms of do the best we can, finish up to B three, B four and, and, and what we can do with what little money for. Things that will not be seen, oil restoration will not be seen, some of the things that we still need them to spend money on, we don't see those things. So I, I, I want what we do finish up to look so that the kids will have, that the pet community will have the pride of a, of a school that looks amazing. And unfortunately, with building A and, and not doing building C unfortunate that is, I think we have, and I agree with that. I think you have to hold back a little money, because you have, there's a rainy day, who knows what that's going to be? So I, I just like the fact that we're, according to what I'm seeing in the schedule. We're going to be finishing this and there's going to be something that these kids that are coming from the middle school are going to be able to really, and from other schools that may draw them to come back. But I, I don't want to, I don't want to, I don't, I don't know what the suggestion is as far as building C and all of that, I can't imagine right now. And I just hope that when it's finished, that there'll be some pride, I mean, there's going to be pride. That the kids are really going to, you know, already they take pride in, in the swim gym. Kids, you know, that, that's a big thing to them, the way it looks though, the way it operates.
The reason I, 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 the reason I had said, I don't want to commit to anything before we know about possible future sources of funding. Because I don't know that if we are awarded any of these fundings, SSMP or whatever, we have to use them. We can, I don't think they can just sit, the SSMP we definitely have to use, and I don't know if a settlement with Metro, if that wasn't in place. I, I, and I don't know who can answer this question, but if that even has to be used or it's allowed to sit in the car, I don't know. But you can't, so that's why I'm not advocating yet to pull the plug on it, because we don't know.
We just felt it was time to bring it to now.
No, 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 I know, thank you, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying that, that in thinking, constantly trying to play this out like a chess game. You know, I know from past experience, if you are awarded SSMP funds, you have to spend them on building.
But it's on Elrodeo.
Elrodeo, it's done.
Yeah, so it would be awarded for Elrodeo.
I, I, once again, I'm not sure how that works, whether if it's awarded.
If you get SSMP for Elrodeo, does it have to be spent on Elrodeo? Or that's refunding what we've spent on Elrodeo, which frees up other money, is that correct?
And I believe MTA goes to your general.
Well.
Do we have any, any approximate feeling of how much we will get on that at this point?
Maybe restricted, it looks.
Yes.
Do we have any idea of SSMP at Elrodeo at this point?
No.
We're, we're going with the, the SAA's assumption of about twenty million.
Really?
So it's worth going out.
For the retrofitting and the mitigation of Elrodeo?
We just couldn't put it on the table tonight and say.
No, I understand, I, I know, I, I know.
Right.
I would say.
That's not going to make it possible for to finish up the projects though, so it's not the.
Yeah, I mean, they can sell the bonds, but you can't, you're going to have to sell them, you're going to have to use the funds within a certain period of time. I mean, there, also there's a potential for refinancing, like save some money.
Yeah, we asked that at the last key, the thing they said, it's not right now, but it may be.
Yeah, there's legislation that's, that's out there, so there, but I don't think it's going to be significant enough to. Go into some of these.
You're right.
Yeah, I mean, it would be risky.
It'd be a dream, it would be a dream.
It'd be interesting if everything combined, since everything seems to not fall our way, then at one point everything does fall our way.
Well.
That's a different decision.
I mean, I, I think there's, there's just like a reality check, depending where we're at and having a plan and, and then having a plan for the future. So I think we have to like kind of. What I'm hearing you say is we need to regroup a little bit, so here's the things we should finish. And then regroup, see what you have, see where you want to be and, and then look at what that plan is for the next.
Exactly.
Right, and I think that's smart, and I think it's smart for us to look at what we have and how to maximize that, because. Then you're ahead of it.
I have a question.
Not that you weren't, instead of people feeling like we are ahead of it, because we have a plan, things change all the time, that's like.
Played up, I could maybe get to the afternoon, when I have someone to watch, I'd like, if there's a problem.
If you'd like to do it Monday afternoon, because it's going to be before you.
If you'd like to do it Monday afternoon, because it's going to be before you on Tuesday.
Okay, but I'll be going through it, but I, I mean, I'm trying to navigate it right now, and it's quite a lengthy volume.
We're so, we're so involved in this, we, we appreciate any opportunity to go through it and display it and talk about how.
Okay, well, I, I'd like to do it.
Obviously a lot of work, so.
Anybody wants that, not to, Brown Act wants to join me, I'd be happy.
Because we are asking, we'll be asking you to adopt it on Tuesday.
Right, because we have to do it.
On October. So, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you for the presentation.
I really appreciate it.
By the way, one more question, the numbers of days that you have on the lines of that, the days to go to the end, I didn't count them, but like you have five hundred and some odd days on that bottom line for Elrodeo, that you anticipate that at five hundred and some odd days, you'll be finished at that time on the end of the green line?
Well, yeah, the really, the ones you wanna look at are the ones to the left. You know, the, the, the number that matters is December twenty three.
There's numbers, oh, I, down on the, are you talking about the line there? Okay.
Yeah, so the way this is, is a very simple schedule, this is a bracket. The bracket is a scope. What's underneath it's, this one, for example, is building C construction is the bracket, it's about that many days. I wouldn't be that concerned about the durations. What, what we really wanna look at is this end date. So that tells you what that end date would be. Bid date and duration, this is a duration.
Okay.
It's not a detailed schedule. Same thing here, if you look at legacy oil wells, it's a bracket. So there's the duration, and here are.
And completion.
And then I put in something really critical, like a DTSC or a governmental agency that gets in our way a great deal. The green is production, is what it represents. So it's as simple as I can make it.
Okay.
That's great.
I, I also wanted to add, you know, in thinking, right, you said legacy oil wells. From all the oil wells, it looks like we're spending close, close seventy two to seventy five million dollars. That was not included in the budget.
Yes, sir.
So I think that's something to consider, being that, you know, our short, our shortfall is, maybe you're saying a hundred million, we can do a hundred million.
One hundred and twenty.
I think you're tend to be more conservative, that's why we get money back. But I, I.
Hopefully.
Yeah. So I think a huge chunk of what we're missing is, is in the oil.
Well, that, is that net, is that net MTA and city kick in?
That's, no, that's the cost of the wells for a man.
Of mitigating.
I'm not counting my T A at all. And that's just, and, and I did, and it is eleven million for the city, so, so it's sixty one million. So then we can easily say half, then half the cost of the oil wells, that have been found with the oil wells, which is a requirement from state agencies in order to build here. It's not something that we wanted to do, now we could not build, and then we would not have to remediate that. That was kind of planned for a very long time. So I think that, that goes without saying, that had really impeded our ability to successfully do that, that, and of course, the escalation, which, which I've never seen anything like it. That, that, that easily ate up more than the other half of what we're short is in escalation. And I think people need to understand and ask questions about when they say, why are we where we are? If, if for me, right off the surface, escalation, oil wells. It is in this position, so. We don't know if, if the escalation is a hundred percent due to pandemic, partly do, we have, I don't know if you ever know that, but you can't take it to a pandemic.
Many things besides that, I mean, the soils and all the other things that you ran into and government agency, you know, cost. created a lot of costs, it's not just the oil well. So I think those contingencies, certainly you had them built in, but then you also had eminent domain, and there's a variety of things, but there is also many possibilities that you people to provide and how you schedule them.
Accelerating the schedule for years was, was the biggest impact.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say, I love this stuff. This is like, I'm so, this always is the, the most interesting, still a lot, one of the most interesting topics. I mean, even, it's, it's funny how well timed this citation was today. I was in my economics class, which is on facing district office on the right side of B two on the second floor. And so we were looking out over the front lawn and classmates of mine were saying, so, what's, what's happening here? And I looked at the, the master plan on the district website, and I was looking around going, well, over here, this is in the, eventually, this is what we hope to have happen. It's very, it's very exciting overall.
Okay, so there's no other business, I believe the meeting at seven thirty five is adjourned. Thank you for your time, patience and your attention. We'll see you on Tuesday.
I think she's, she's appeared on it. I have a question for you, for you.
Mandy, are you still there? She may.
It's definitely.
Well, if you take off the thing, you can see if she's still here by the, by what's on the screen. Because right now, she can't, you can't see her at all, if you, if you take that off. Take off the sharing, there. So now if she sees up there, she's not there. I don't think she's there, right?
No.
So the meeting is closed.
Yeah, the meeting is adjourned. I think it's seven thirty.